Good evening everyone and welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. So tonight, there was no executive session. There were no executive session votes tonight. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Sure, come on up and then just state your name, please.
The microphone's not on.
There we go.
Yes, that's good. Thank you.
Perfect. My name is Alicia Vignelli Henry, and my address is 660 Point Judith Road. I just wanted to make a quick statement. I know that there is an agenda item about appointing a liaison from the school committee to the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Awareness Committee here in Narragansett. If you don't mind, I do that right now instead of later. Is that okay? Oh, perfect. Okay, so this committee, when it was established, five members along with a liaison from the school committee and, well, we hope from the school committee and the town, the town councils. So our new, like my new voice and some really experienced. And we know that the work that we do, there's a wide scope. And having as many resources available to us through the school, through our community, will benefit the entire community. So having the rep and, you know, some of the things we've been working on, as you could see, we've been meeting since July. They cover everything from school playgrounds to Native American Heritage Month. And a lot of the things, I know the schools are doing those same things. So if we could have someone to really like bridge those resources together, that would be wonderful for us. We meet every Wednesday, every first month, wait, the first Wednesday of the month. Sorry, guys. Right in that room, right over there at 5:30 PM. That is our new time, 5:30. So I would, I don't know if you could ask me any questions, but I would be happy to answer them. Or if you need any more information, I would, you know, just reach out via email and we could take it from there.
Sure, we'll take questions from the school committee during the actual discussion item later in the meeting.
Okay, and I will stay as long as I can. I just don't know how long I'll make it for. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else I would like to speak for open forum? Okay, thank you. We are moving on to our showcase, which I'm very excited about. So Dr. Cummings, can you do some introductions, please?
Oh, it is my great pleasure. So first, let me have Mr. Marr come up to the microphone. So our athletic director, Matt Marr. And, you know, it is our great pleasure to highlight the tremendous work of our state champion girls volleyball program. So Matt, take it away.
Yeah, thanks for having us. We do have our volleyball team represented here tonight. But I wanted to highlight a couple of other sports who couldn't be here this evening but had fantastic seasons, beginning with our boys and girls cross-country teams, who narrowly missed qualifying for the New England, which, if you know, cross-country is really difficult to do. So they had a fantastic season, highlighted by Maddie O'Neil on the girl's side. And then on the boy's side, we had three standout runners in Chase Flint, Adam Melnick, and then a freshman who led the pack and actually finished 26th in the state in Cole Francis. So a lot of bright things to come for our cross-country teams. Moving on would be our girls soccer team, who we just found out this week won the sportsmanship award for all of Division III and IV as a team. So we're really proud of them in that. Our boys soccer team was looking to repeat as state champions, went all the way to the final game and lost in penalty kicks. So they had another terrific season. Our football team, who couldn't be here tonight because they have their Gridiron Award night, went undefeated the entire season in their league and won their second straight Super Bowl after moving up from Division IV to Division III. So huge accomplishment for them. And then last but not least is our volleyball team. So come on up. We have our coaches Abby Hummel and Holly Hummel, and we're going to bring them up. And they're going to talk about the season accolades. But I just want to make another comment. For Abby Hummel, she does a lot more than just coach for our department. She's awesome in her job as an assistant to our athletic department, as well as working with Steve Gormley in operations. But she does an equally impressive job as coach. And for her efforts this year, she was named Coach of the Year and led her team to an undefeated, nearly perfect season, when we won every single set leading up to the state championship, dropped the first set of the state championship, probably to get a taste for what it would have been like, and then rattled off three wins in a row for the state crown. So here is.
So I always, I would prefer if we could invite the whole team, but I totally understand COVID. So I always do our seniors all together. So if they're watching, that's something that's big to me. We always have captains on a team, but our seniors are heavily led together. And this year, we had nine. So we're going to lose a large chunk of that team. But our three captains here today, Dylan Bellows, Sidney Davis, and Livvy Warnes. Why are you guys coming?
Abby, Abby, can they kind of like stand behind you, like facing the camera? That'd be wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
So I don't know if you know this, but our class is also very academically strong. We have some of the smartest girls in the, in the school playing sports and playing volleyball, as well as they do more than just win on the court. This year, our girls volleyball team actually donated to a fellow coach. We raised money for gear for ourselves, and they actually donated money to a fellow coach that's battling cancer. So I thought that's very big of them and very big of the team to give back. Just want to say something? But I really appreciate you guys having us here and all the support from our school system, from Mr. Marr and the superintendent. It's really important to show that we have support, whether we're winning or losing. And we have had some winning seasons together and we have had some losing. And I'm very proud of these girls for the four years and all of the hard work they put in on and off the court. Because it's not just an in-season sport. I do rely on, on these ladies out of season and out of practice and stuff like that. So just really, it's really, we're here for you guys, not for me, but I really appreciate them and it's really all them. So.
So I just want to say a big congratulations to the team, not only on your amazing accomplishment, but for really being student leaders. It's really nice that you painted that whole picture and shared with us and the philanthropic pieces as well. So we're really proud of you and we're really happy that you took the time to come tonight. You know, we did ask just the captains to come tonight, but we really appreciate that. That means a lot for us to see you. Congratulations to Ms. Hummel, Coach of the Year. But this is awesome. It was a great fall season for all of our Narragansett high school teams. And this is very exciting. So congratulations, but we really appreciate you guys coming tonight. Oh, Ms. Nobles has a question.
I'm just curious if, if any of our senior captains are planning to play volleyball in their college careers.
I hope to play at Brick College. And then I talked to the coach and she said to come to tryouts and keep in touch with her if I apply.
Well, good luck.
And we, we do have other athletes. Livvy Warnes has actually already signed her letter of intent, but it's for swimming, which she actually just came from the meet straight here too.
Congratulations. Where are you going, Livvy?
I'm going to St. Michael's.
Very nice.
Thank you.
You can't see them smiling, but they are. Do you have any other questions for them?
Diane has a question for Mr. Marr.
Yeah, reference our state champion football team. I'm just curious. I know we did back-to-back with state champion in Division IV and then Division III. I'm just curious, has, has any other school ever won back-to-back championships in two different divisions?
Can you come to the mic, come to the microphone, Matt?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, but I will try to find out. And just another thing to note about football is Coach Blessing took over the first year that I was here. So I'm in year five. Coach is in year five. We had a senior-laden team, which obviously helps a lot. But we also had the highest numbers we've seen on a football team in, I don't know, probably since I was in high school at Narragansett. There was about 70 kids or 72 kids signed up at one point for football. And when Coach Blessing took over, we were in the mid to high 30s. And that would drop down towards the tail end of the year. So our programs are definitely on the upswing. Obviously, our enrollment is growing as well, which is all, you know, positive things for our athletic programs.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the volleyball team or Mr. Marr from the school committee? All right. Well, thank you, girls, so much for coming tonight. Certainly welcome to stay as long as you want, but certainly we understand you have homework and other things you need to do. So thank you, guys, so much. One more round of applause. Dr. Cummings, that was our, that was it for our showcase for tonight, correct?
That was it.
Okay. So we are moving on to oral reports from the school committee. Do any school committee members have a report to give for this month? Alex, you want to go first?
Sure.
Thanks.
The Health and Wellness Committee met on December 9th and reviewed reports and updates from each subcommittee. We will be focusing on the whole student with particular focus on addressing mental health in the remaining months for this year. We're looking into the effects of isolation, depression, stress, and how to cope and work through it. It was also mentioned that in the past, there was a club called Mindful Mariners that looked into these techniques, which could also be brought back in the future. Many students in Narragansett are continuing to take advantage of the free lunches. There remains to be seen what happens with Washington's Build Back Better campaign and government assistance for universal free meals for all. There will also be a food tasting at the elementary school sourcing local ingredients of squash apple soup. The Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition also sends out a monthly newsletter. And recent one involved resources for students and staff to maintain better mental health and reduce stress. And our guidance and our school psychologists are continuing to do a terrific job and are readily available for every student and staff member, and we are thankful for their services.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Do any other school committee members have any reports to give? Diane?
We began negotiations with our, our unions for contract renewal. And Josh and I are representing the school committee in those meetings. And we had our first meeting last night, and it went very well.
Great, thank you. All right, we are moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Great, thanks, Tammy. So, you know, we are going to have Gail present to us on state assessments. Before we do get to that, I'll just give a couple of highlights. So really, as has been for the last now almost two years, you know, so much energy going to keeping kids safe and keeping schools in session with COVID. We have had a significant increase in cases post-Thanksgiving. Our staff is working incredibly hard to just make sure everyone is, as many kids as possible are staying in school. And so, you know, that, we've had a number of cases at the elementary school, especially in preschool, where we've had to close classrooms. It's particularly difficult with preschoolers because they don't mask super well and they are very close together. And so when we do get a case at the preschool level, we do have to close that classroom for seven days. You know, we've been working really closely with the Department of Health on all these pieces. And I did send a letter out to parents last week, kind of reminding everyone of what the guidelines and what the rules are and what, and those guidelines that we do have to follow. You know, just to reiterate what I said in the, in the letter, if a student is vaccinated, they are not required to quarantine. And if they are unvaccinated, then they are required to quarantine. All students age five and up are eligible for vaccination. And so we do encourage all students to get vaccinated. And so that will really help keep as many kids as possible in school. Part two of that is that there's a lot of questions about the test-to-stay program. That's been talked about quite a bit in the media. So we are in line to be a part of that program. It is very resource-intensive. And so one of the things that we will have to figure out is, you know, will we need to add a nursing position in order to do that test-to-stay program? It, it had, one of the caveats of the program that isn't widely discussed in the media is that it is only for elementary school students. And the theory behind it is that elementary school students have not yet had the opportunity to become fully vaccinated. And therefore, it's giving them the room to become fully vaccinated and stay, stay in school. And so they are rolling it out gradually. We are in line to become a part of that. And so I'll keep you updated about that as that moves forward. So with that, you know, I would like to introduce Gail. And again, these RICAS and SAT results were taken last spring in the midst of COVID. You know, at that point, we were getting everyone back to school after a fairly disrupted school year. So, you know, Gail will go over some of those points as she moves forward. But there's really some great data in here that we've been using to really think deeply about teaching and learning. And I really want to compliment Gail and her team of coaches for the work that they've been doing to disaggregate this data, to work with teachers and students and really point us in the right direction. So with that, Gail, passing the baton to you.
Thank you. So I have a presentation to go through. I know you had it in your electronic packet and you have it with you now. And I know the public has had the opportunity to view the results for a couple of weeks. We have already sent home the paper copies to parents. So I, I won't spend a lot of time on each slide, but I wanted to at least give you that overview about how we did and what we have done since we have gotten our data. So as you know, every year, we take the state assessments in ELA and math. For grades three through eight, we do the RICAS. And at the upper grades, we do the SAT. As a state, the state, obviously, because of, of COVID, didn't do as well as we would like to as a state. Student performance declined across the state in both subjects. And the steepest declines were in mathematics. That's statewide. Also, our participation rate throughout the state had decreased during COVID, especially with the students who, for whatever reason, were being schooled at home virtually. They may not have chosen, chosen to come in and take the assessments. This slide shows the RICAS statewide percentage meeting and exceeding expectations. You can see in the bottom left-hand corner how we have done as a state from 2018, 19, and 21 as far as the students being tested. And the graph on the, on the right shows 18, 19, and 21, the percent meeting and exceeding expectations in ELA and math. And you can see that as a state, the state has gone down in both ELA and in math with the assessments that were taken last year. This is our district profile, the next slide. A lot of information on this that I thought you would ask. I'm, I was trying to anticipate every question you could ask me. So it is pretty much everything you want to know about us on this slide. Bottom left-hand corner is the student growth changes between 2019 and 2021. Remember, we did not take it in 2020 during the first wave of COVID. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see our proficiency in ELA and in math in both the RICAS and the SATs. And then below that are the participation rates that were slightly down for both the RICAS and the SATs. The graph on the right shows our proficiency over time, noting once again, we did not take the assessment in 2020. And then finally, at the bottom of this slide, it's by subgroup, if you're interested in seeing how various subgroups in our district performed. So I wanted to pull what neighboring districts, how they performed as well. So we are first, the first line at the top is Narragansett, how we performed in the RICAS ELA math, SAT, SAT ELA in math. And then I compared it to East Greenwich, Exeter-West Greenwich, North Kingstown, and South Kingstown. The next slide just compares our specific district to the results compared to the state. You can see that we were above the state in both ELA. You can see that we were above the state in both ELA and math. That would be the far right-hand side of this slide would show you that, meeting expectations. For ELA and math, we were exceeding in both ELA and math for the state, as compared to the state. Then I broke it down by grade level, seeing how we did in grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I'll get to the SATs in a moment. Our third grade actually did pretty well. For ELA, we had 71.2% meeting or exceeding expectations. So, I really wanted to highlight that. This would be probably the first cohort that benefited from our preschool program, right, Dr. Cummings?
Correct. And if the committee will recall, one of your goals was really to focus on third-grade reading, right? And try to have all kids proficient in reading by third grade. And that was one of the underpinnings of starting the more comprehensive preschool. So, that's significant progress in that area.
And you can see the state had 40.4% meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA, 71%. That's pretty significant. For math, I mean, we did better than the state. We had 64.4% meeting or exceeding with, the state had 25.1. So, we are better than the state, not as good as we are in math, but that's a pretty solid score there for grade three. Grade four results, they did score better in ELA than they did in math. When we met with the fourth-grade teachers, we've started to do some unpacking of that data, which I'll share with you how we're doing that at the end of this presentation. And then grade five. Once again, we're above the state in both ELA and math, but still not where we want to be, obviously, as a district.
And so, I'll just interject for one second, Gail. So, the statewide numbers are a little bit deceiving, right? Because you're putting every child in the state, some of whom don't have the same educational opportunities that some of our students might have. And so, we, you know, certainly look at the state as one group, but we also compare against kind of a suburban cohort. And so, for that, again, we don't compare just for the sake of comparison. We compare for the sake of, is there something we can learn from what another district is doing? Is there something that's happening that is successful someplace else that we need to investigate so that we have the opportunity to continue to grow and get better at what we're doing?
Continuing along with grade six, here are the results of grade six. Once again, above the state, but yet not where we want to be, especially in the area of mathematics, with only 38.4% meeting or exceeding expectations, 60.8% meeting or exceeding in ELA. Grade seven, same thing. We are above the state, but not where we want to be, obviously, with only 38% meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA and 37.3 in math. And the same with grade eight. So, we obviously have some work to do, and we have plans implemented, and I will share them with you at the end of this presentation. For SATs, the percentage of student meeting the ELA in math. This is the slide of the state. And these are our students. So, we had 70%, about 70.3% meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. That's a pretty decent score there. But only 49.1% were meeting or exceeding in mathematics. If you were curious, this is just a slide the coaches and I found and thought it might be of interest to you. Our mean score for our school at the SATs was a 10.47. We had 111 students taking the SATs. 47% met both benchmarks. 70% met the English and writing. 49% met the math. And there were 28% of our students that didn't make either of the benchmarks. So, as a curriculum team, you know, part of our job was to, you know, put this data together, present it to the schools so that the schools knew how they were doing. We met with the science folks. We met with the high school ELA, math, social studies. We met with all the grade levels in the elementary and the middle school. And the first thing we did was that basic blush overview of, this is how we did. But then we really need to get into, okay, so what, now what? What are we going to do? What's our plan? Because, yes, we did better than the state, but we can do better than how we did. So, we started really digging deeper, looking at student responses, looking at the released tasks, figuring out where our students did really well and where they didn't do well. And then where can we improve our instruction or our remediation to make sure that we get our students where they need to be? We did find that these were some glaring areas for growth. In ELA, essay writing was something, you know, the ideas, developing the ideas, producing clear, coherent writing. Grammar, grammar was something else that came up. All those conventions, you know, capitalization, punctuation, spelling, that we need to be explicitly teaching them. And in math, the areas that came up across the board were integer operations, solving and writing linear equations, and graphing. So, the packet that I gave you a few minutes before the meeting started is just kind of a sample of when we went into these meetings with the departments after we did the blush of how we did in general. We would show them, okay, here are the test questions. Here are the test questions that are in this particular standard. Here are the ones we did well. Here are the ones we didn't do well. What observations can you make? And that's where these deep conversations came up, like, oh, we don't usually get to that until the end of May, and they're being tested in March. We got to make sure we weave that in. Or, oh, they get this concept in this grade, and then they don't see it again until this future grade. We need to make sure that we put some review in there. And that's what this handout that I shared with you kind of guided them to go through, where they had to do some item analysis, you know, find the three lowest performing items, the three highest performing items. We even had released the, we had released items that showed how our students answered essay questions. So, we could take the teachers through and say, why do you think this student didn't get the score? Oh, they didn't really have a, they didn't refer back to the text. Oh, we need to make sure we give them practice in referring back to, not that we're teaching to the test by any means, but, you know, these are standards. These are grade-level standards. That's what this test is all about. So, we spent a few meetings going in with the teachers, showing them results, how we did. What are we going to do? What's our plan? Who needs coaching? And another piece of that is also our tutoring program, which is really part of this, that we have been, we started it at the elementary in the middle. We're still trying to get it going at the high school. But looking at those kids who need a little bit more assistance than what they're getting to try to get them where they need to be. So, that's the plan. It's a plan that's going to take us throughout the year, even little things like exposing them to actual test questions. We had conversations with the math and the ELA teachers at the high school about SAT questions. And here's an easy way to prep by giving them a few released tasks before a class starts and so on. And what can we do to strategically make sure that these kids are as ready as they can be, not only for the assessment, obviously, but to be college-ready and for their futures?
So, in addition, one of the things that we've been working on as a leadership team with the principals and assistant principals, and also going into schools, is looking at the level of rigor at which our lessons are targeted. And so, if you were to think about the RICAS or the SAT, the questions are at a certain level of rigor, right? So, where students have to, they have to do multiple tasks within a question. They have to understand, they have to interpret, they have to apply. Sometimes they have to look at a visual and then integrate that with a word problem. And one of the things we're looking at is how often are we increasing the level of rigor on the instructional tasks within a classroom that pushes kids to not only see that once they're taking a standardized test, but it's just a part of what they're doing on a daily basis? And so, for that, we're really working with teachers closely, and they are working with one another very closely to increase the level of rigor of their tasks. So, we had Karen Hess come in at the beginning of the year, who's a national expert in that, and really worked with our whole faculty closely. We've been doing follow-up on that, building by building, you know, as they go through. I've been doing instructional rounds with the principals to really kind of see where that is going and adjusting. So, all the work that Gail is doing around the detailed curriculum work is really critical. It's also around teaching practice and opportunity to learn and allowing students to try things and then retry them, right? So, it's not a one-and-done. And so, that's really important for our teaching practice so that kids are learning to challenge themselves in how to tackle a difficult problem and how to apply and solve a multi-step problem. And so, for us, we're looking at the alignment of the standards to the class that students are in. And we're also looking at the, what are the practices of teachers in order to allow every student to challenge themselves on a regular basis and get feedback from that challenge? So, those are really important aspects as we go forward.
And I also wanted to mention, when we did these data tours, it wasn't just with the ELA and the math teachers. For example, we had the social studies department come in to do the ELA data review with us because there are things they can do in their social studies class. We had the PE teachers in, so we could talk to them about what they could do math-wise, maybe, in their PE classes. So, you know, it's not just the ELA and the math teachers. If everybody took a piece of this, then we have a better opportunity to have the students see that, you know, this is important, this matters. Oh, I heard this before in this class, and start to make those connections. So, it's a lot of work, but it's good work. And, you know, we're determined to make sure we're giving students everything that they need.
And we do see this as a sense of urgency. And so, you know, having less than half of our kids be college-ready in math is not acceptable, right? And so, we're making lots of changes, and you've heard about them here in order to push as many kids forward to higher-level math as is possible under our program and to give support to those students that aren't ready to do that.
Great. So, what questions do we have from the school committee? Josh?
So, I appreciate that level of urgency. I have three questions, though. First one, when we're looking at the year-by-year, grades three through grade eight, there's sort of a gradual fluctuation between years, but then there are some that it's really drastic in the numbers where they decrease so significantly. I guess I'm just curious as to what some of that root cause might be when we see, you know, I think it was a 40% difference or more between six to seven or even from seven to eight in math?
You mean when a grade level does well one year and then doesn't do well?
Well, it's purely consistent across grade three, four, or five. And then we get to grades six, seven, eight, and there's sort of these larger, really significant gaps in proficiency. And I'm just curious as to, I don't know, like, what is the conversation around why that might be occurring?
So, it's two things. One is curriculum alignment, right? And we don't believe that our middle school curriculum is yet fully aligned to RICAS when they changed that test. And so, we're working through that. The elementary school is a little better aligned. I think two is collaborative practice. And so, we have changed schedules this year so that teachers are paired up and having more common planning time in order to push one another with coaching to get to the right place. I think three is cohort data. So, when, if you were to follow any of the cohorts, we see some swings in middle school. The middle school cohorts definitely had a dip since elementary school. And we feel also that, especially this year, middle school was really impacted by COVID, right? Significantly so in that age range. And then, fourth, you know, and I'm not saying this to give excuses, it is sometimes difficult to get our middle and high school students to buy into the importance of some of the exams, right? And so, we have some students who will say to us, these really don't matter. And so, while we, and we know that personal relationship with teachers is around, well, here's why this matters, right? And here's why this is important. That was particularly difficult this year in COVID where we had so much screen time, right? So, that's a small part of it, but that is also part of it. Whereas, I think the curricular and the teaching pieces will have a bigger effect. But absolutely, Josh, I think you're right on in terms of, there are some big swings, depending on grade level, and that's something that we're looking at.
Can I keep going? You started to address my other two questions. First is, I know we recently adopted in the LA curriculum with Rides push for districts adopting high-quality curriculum. Where are we with mathematics curriculum?
Oh, good question. So, last year, we, well, the year before, we adopted, the spring of the year before, we adopted the curriculum. Last year was the first year of using the new materials. And those were adopted grades five through 12. That's the SABIS product. So, that's 512. We also, in pre-K last year, adopted the Boston Public School curriculum, and they do not have a math component. So, we have bridges in preschool, and we also have bridges in K and 1. So, you might be saying, what about 2, 3, 4? Okay, so 2, 3, and 4 right now are piloting both bridges and the SABIS product. Either with the rest of the elementary school or the rest of the district. We want to have just two consistent programs. So, that pilot is happening right now. A team actually just went to another district to do an observation on Friday. We have vendor presentations booked. We have the materials. And we will have those materials in place next fall.
And are you feeling still really great with the ELA curriculum and the two that you're choosing from that will address these areas of need?
Yep. So, the ELA curriculum, last year, we adopted, and this is the first year we're using it, in grades nine through 12. It's called My Perspectives. This year, our seventh and eighth-grade teachers are piloting My Perspectives. And it looks like we'll be ready for it to be rolled out in grade eight next year. So, eight through 12 will be on that path. And then what we're doing right now for the rest of the grades is we have four products that are in the green that we're, on ed reports that we're looking at. We have a committee formed. We're meeting right in January. We have vendor presentations. We have materials. We'll do some piloting. We'll narrow it down to two this year. And then we will full-throttle pilot those two next year because the following year, we have to have all of our highly-approved curriculum materials in place for math and ELA. And we are right on track for that.
And I will say, Josh, you know, we do feel like we've had great success with ELA in the elementary school. You know, and I think that we're, you know, the data would show that kids are reading pretty proficiently, are making the right growth. We've had great interventions there. You know, the writing is coming along, you know, in the ways that we want it to. The curriculum law is forcing some changes for us, right? As we go through and look at the K5, K6 area. So, more to come on that. But, you know, our sense of, we have to adopt something right now for the K5 range. The data would tell us that's not something that is front burner for us right now because the kids seem to be doing pretty well. And when you go in class, you know, some of it is data, some of it is the observation. When you go in class, kids are reading a ton, talking about books, you know, the hallways are filled with writing. Like, they're doing the right stuff.
So, my last part, you had mentioned, you know, it is hard to get middle schoolers to buy into something like this. And we already know, sort of, it's our dilemma in schools with children already being over-assessed. in schools with children already being over-assessed. And I'm just thinking, you know, our students are taking RICAS every year, there are interim assessments, they're doing I-Ready, they have PSAT 8, 9, 10, they have SAT, they have NGSA three times over their schooling career. I wonder, two-part, how is that data triangulated to reflect this? And two, I don't know, how, maybe to your point of them being like, oh, why does this matter? Because it's sort of ongoing all the time, every year, and I just, how do they make meaning of that, I guess, as students?
Yeah, well, I do know that the, the I-Ready data is closely aligned to the projected outcome a student supposedly will make, will achieve on their RICAS. They've, the data studies have, so we should be, they, there's like a whole correlation chart that we should be able to look to see how a student is doing on I-Ready and make a pretty good prediction, if they continued that pathway, what they would get on their RICAS. I know at the middle school, they are spending some time actually sitting with the kids during, I don't know what they call it now, advisory tests. Thank you. And meeting with the kids and, and looking at their data and trying to, you know, let them see how they're doing and, and make some goals and so on. But as a school, we, we always triangulate the data, and it's, it's just so helpful when we're making decisions to not just have I-Ready. So we have I-Ready, and we have their RICAS, and then we have their end-of-the-unit tasks, and we have, you know, and you put that all together, make the picture of how that child is doing, and then decide, does this child need tutoring? Do they need enrichment? What do they? So I know we, as professionals, look at it all the time, the kids, you know, we, we try to show them, we try to motivate them, some hop on and some say, thank you very much, but, you know.
Thanks.
Any other questions from any school committee members? Diane?
It's probably an understatement, Gail, to say that teaching and learning have faced significant challenges in the last year and a half, and, and although we've taken some steps back to normalcy, we're certainly not there yet. But, you know, like Josh, I am also concerned about the trend line of the RICAS scores with, with the exception of a 3.4% increase in grade six ELA and a 2% grade six improvement in math, again, in, in grade six. The trend line, you know, is, is on a downward slope. But I thought what was interesting is when, when you got to the high school presentation, you know, the students are, are going in with perhaps some significant gaps based on the, on the testing results of the eighth graders to be rising ninth graders, and yet by the SAT results, which is combined 11th and 12th grade, I believe, both, I mean, those gap, I mean, it's been a tremendous increase in meeting or exceeding the expectations. I mean, it went from, I think, ELA from 32% eighth grade, and by 11th, 12th, when the SAT, it jumps up to 70.3%. I mean, that's an amazing increase. And the same with math, 12% from eighth grade up to 49.1% as a junior, senior.
Right. You know, I would just say, it's important, and we can get the data to you to use cohort data with that, rather than different cohorts. So you're really kind of looking at apples and oranges, right? So the, you know, the cohort of eighth grade, where we had 12% score well, right, is, so these SAT scores is only from 11th graders in the spring of last year, right? And so absolutely agree with your point in terms of the trend data, but I think it's just not a statistically accurate comparison to say, this group got, you know, 50%, and this group was at 12%, and that's a, a growth comparison, right? So I would expect the group that got 12%, one, that was very true of eighth graders across the state, they did pretty poorly. And then, two, I am worried about that cohort. They missed a lot, right? So they missed a lot in, in key formative years, so we're doing a lot of tutoring with them. So, and we do have a number of current ninth graders, and Mr. Warner can certainly talk to this if he wanted to, who are really struggling in Algebra I. And so, so we are worried about their skills long-term, and we're going to be doing a lot of extra work with that group because we're identifying those pieces. So absolutely point taken in terms of, we have worries about the achievement levels at the middle school, and that's why we're doing a lot of the curriculum work that we're doing.
Gail, I have two questions. So one, will we, at a future meeting, you know, just see a similar presentation about the NGSA science scores?
Oh, I can certainly do that. I have that, I have that data. I can certainly add that, yep.
Okay. And then the other question is for either you or for Pete. What, what do either of you anticipate, like, this coming budget season, that the school committee can expect to hear, how we can support addressing the students that need this? So are you predicting that, that, you know, one-to-one or small-group tutoring would continue for next year? Would that be a budget ask of the school committee? I'm not sure how much is of that tutoring is being funded by, like, the ESAR funds versus our budget, and I'm sure, Pete, you have no idea if there's going to be ESAR funds next year. So I guess my question is really just about budget. What can we anticipate in this budget season that'll look different from, you know, pre-COVID?
Great question. So I think that you'll be seeing us ask for interventionists, for sure, and, you know, some of that is covered through the ESAR funding, some of it is not. So we'll continue to do that in the tutoring as well. I think that, you know, as we go through, we're really working closely with the middle school to see what's the most effective format to get as many students up to standard as possible. And so I think we're going to hear a little bit more from Mary Ann around how she wants to configure her classes and her grades, so she's really thinking through that at the time, at the moment. We do, because of the ESAR funds that we've gotten already, have more interventionists in this year than we were able to have in last year. So we're also looking to see what is the effect of those positions, and is that something that we want to continue to have?
Do you have any idea if one of the things Mary Ann is considering, especially for seventh and eighth grade, is like that additional Common Core math class that would be targeted for the whole grade? You know, so the, the regular teachers, they, they did that in the past. I don't know when that got phased out, so the regular classroom teachers, they only have to focus on, you know, units one through three in Common Core, and then that unit four, geometry and everything, would be taught in that supplemental, whatever, you know, every-other-day class, half-year, something. That was something that was a while ago, and I don't know.
That was the year that the Common Core standards came out, and we, we had to, I wasn't the curriculum director then, but from my understanding, they had to add that because of the difference in the Common Core state standards, and that's why that class took place. Now that they're caught up, that's why that class disappeared.
I just didn't know if that was anything that, when Mary Ann's looking at, you know, obviously, there's a group of students that need remediation and tutoring to help with their gap closing. I just didn't know if that was an approach she was thinking about as well.
Right. So I think everything's on the table, right? And it's really around, you know, a couple of things. One, teaching practices and differentiation. So we kind of find, reaching kids where they are and challenging them appropriately to get up to the standard where we need for them to be, takes different students different amounts of time, right, to do that. And so what are the structures and system we have in place to support students where it takes them more time? They may not need remediation, but they might need some more time, right, to be able to do that. And so that's one of the things that she's looking at. I think the second piece is really around teaching practice and coaching, right? And so are we teaching it in the best and most kind of well-researched way that we possibly could be for students to be able to attain those standards? And, you know, one of the things, we have a, a new math coach this year, who's doing some really terrific work, you know, and thoughtful work around what is best practice in teaching a lot of these standards. And so she's going in, and different than evaluation, right, going in, working with groups of teachers, talking about pedagogy, and really thinking about what is the best way that we can get to this standard. I think long-term, ultimately, you hit the nail on the head, is that it's about time and opportunity, right? And so that is what Mary Ann is looking at. What we want to be careful of is kind of putting so much stuff into middle school that we lose the nature of middle school, right? And where kids are allowed to explore and do different things. And we also don't want to get to a place where, like, we know you really hate math, so we're going to give you more of it, right? And so we want to be careful that we're engaging kids in it, making them feel some success, not false success, but true, like, time and opportunity success, so that they can get up to standard, and that's one of the reasons why, with our discussion of math pathways, we recognize that for some students, they're a very different kid, as Diane pointed out, and student when they get to high school than they might have been in fifth or sixth grade. It just took them extra time, right? And so we want to make sure that they still have pathways to get to that higher-level math by the time they get to the end of their high school career. Ultimately, we know that Harvard isn't checking on your seventh-grade grades, right, to see how you did in seventh grade to get into Harvard. What they're really looking at is nine through 12. Are you accessing? Are you growing? Are you getting better every year? And we want to make sure that through middle school, we're giving that foundation as we go forward. The data would tell us that we have some cracks in that foundation, and that we're looking really hard at how do we change that foundation so that students can build on it once they get into high school.
So just, so the final question, so do you think, do you anticipate that the tutoring that's taking place this year may continue for next year in some of the buildings? Yes.
So, and, you know, quite honestly, that is, you know, we really got the idea of doing it out of Brown, and they did some real great kind of research, deep research, into the effective ways to do tutoring that was very based in the pandemic. But the research that they did was pre-pandemic and was very thoughtful. And so it is one of these things where you see it work, and you kind of hit yourself on the head and say, why weren't we doing this all along? And it had high effectiveness, particularly in the elementary grades, and, you know, we have a good amount of tutors in the middle school as well, and have seen some really good results out of that, so we're going to keep that going.
Is the tutoring one-to-one, or sometimes a group of two students with one teacher?
It's a small group, but it's, it's never more than four kids.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Gail from the school committee? Josh?
I just have one more. I was going to wait to your time, but it seems like it fits now, based on where the direction that that conversation was just heading. And we were just talking about differentiation to help close this gap for students who, who now have sort of the loss of learning or struggling in math. But when we talk about differentiation, there's also the, the students that are at, approaching at or above grade level. And so I just need to bring up, last month, when there was a lot of attention focused on seventh grade, we had parents that came in, they asked a question. We know that the teams, the leadership teams are already hard at work reimagining, so I'm just wondering if you can provide an update?
Absolutely.
And how that might be communicated, if it hasn't already been with a larger community, about some of that, what might be coming our way as parents with children who may opt into this program to either maintain or continue to achieve at high levels, or even as a way of closing that narrow bridge between approaching and meeting, if that's an opportunity for them still?
So the day after we had the parent meeting, Mary Ann, myself, the, the dean at the middle school, the math coach, we met at 1:00 the next day, and we debriefed the meeting. Mary Ann had her list, she, of, of what, you know, she had taken notes on the night before. We immediately sent out the PowerPoint presentation to parents that was asked for. We heard that the parents wanted to make sure that the teachers knew to tell the kids that they could work on the honors modules during math class. So the coach and the dean met with the teachers. They said they had already told the kids that, but we said, tell them again, tell them a couple of times that you can work on it during, during your classes. We also met with the coach, and she had started to do coaching with the seventh, seventh, eighth-grade math teachers for, on differentiation. The coaches also met with, I was there because I happened to be observing her for her evaluation, the math interventionists about differentiation and what was in the SABIS products and, and other resources that we have. We, I know there was a meeting today, I was unable to attend, but we have another idea now that we're, we're going to be, I haven't even shared it with Peter yet, potentially looking at for some of our eighth-grade math students in the future, making, for those who go to Algebra I and maybe still want to get those eighth-grade concepts, maybe melding that together in some way. So we're, we're definitely working on it. We're, we're trying to be thoughtful and, you know, listen to what they said. There are some things that we, you know, it's hard to do, like, we don't know exactly what the schedule's going to be at the high school yet, to say, are these classes going to be exactly at the same time? But we're trying to make it better than it is now as far as where the kids go when they come back. So we definitely have been working on all of the input that they gave us. As far as honors modules, they are out, the kids have them, they've been working on them. In the, the new math pathways, we started to embed that into the program of studies. I know one concern was, are there still honors classes at the ma, at the high school? There absolutely are honors classes at the high school for math. And we hope when the program of studies comes out, too, people will, will kind of see where we're going with, with the pathways and those combined classes. I'm not sure I really answered your question, but I was trying to tell you what we've been working on.
Yeah, you did. I just, you know, we made it very clear that we heard parents when they spoke to us, and I just want to be sure that there's that, that regular communication that's being shared outside of the, the initial letter that we received and my direct outreach. I, I'm not sure myself as to where it's going and, you know, whether my child might be, so it's not about me, but just in general, I think there are still some questions within the parent community around the direction that it's moving and how to fully engage themselves as parents and their children as students. Just curious.
I just want to make sure so I can, I can respond. So as far as what is going, the math pathways in general, or seventh and eighth-grade modules?
Middle school, seventh and eighth grade specifically. I just hope everyone's well-informed as to some of the changes that you've made, because, I mean, clearly, you put a lot of thought into some of the changes, and I, I think the idea around supporting students is, is great. I, I'm just not sure if everyone's well-informed to know how to support their children, if they are interested or willing or able to do that work.
So they can certainly do an update.
Any, yeah, thank you. Any other questions from the school committee? All right, thank you, Gail. Dr. Cummings, do you have anything else for your superintendent's report?
I do not, thank you.
All right. So we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve consent agenda items CA 1A, CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B, CA 2C?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes, 5-0. On to the budget report, Karen.
Expenditures for the five months ended November 30th are $10,776,863, and that's 32.45% of our budget. Our expenditures and encumbrances are $29,688,307, and that's 89.40% of our budget.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the school committee for Karen? All right. So we're moving on to school committee business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the updated program of studies for Narragansett High School?
Second.
All right, discussion. Mr. Warner, good evening. So, Mr. Warner, we have the, the program of studies in our packet. Can you kind of take us through any, any highlights, anything that you want to kind of point out to us?
Yes.
Before we take questions from the school committee?
Okay. Thank you. First of all, good evening, thank you for having me. One thing I will point out is, we're, we're right in the middle of this process with the program of studies, and so there was a change in, that you were given tonight. Many people are involved in the program of studies. The goal is to have it completed as we start our course. The goal is to have it completed as we start our course selection process, which will take place somewhere towards the end of January. So it is a work in, in progress. We got 95% of it all squared away and we're going to go over a lot, a lot of that tonight. But you may see changes, some suggested additions and deletions that you may make. And we have a lot of people looking at it, the coaches, department chairs. And the result is our, will be our program of studies that the students and parents will be able to access and plan their child's academic program for next year. Make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So let's start on page nine. Do you have that pack in front of you? So you're going to see highlighted, we're adding two additional AP courses to our program of studies. One is going to be an AP art course. And the other is going to be a AP human geography course. You'll find descriptions of both those courses under the art section later on in the program of studies as well as under the social studies section. The second thing we're going to point out is on page 22. And we're proud to be looking at adding another CTE course to our program of studies. The reason it says description forthcoming is because we're in the process of applying. The state has put out a RFP and schools can apply for different programs. We're looking at a communications course and hopefully we'll get that in and start attracting students back to Narri, students to Narragansett High School for that particular program, communications, media and programming.
So that would be video editing, that would be video communication. So a lot of the work and Brian Jennings has been a key participant in trying to design the program. So Lauren as well. And so Brian and Lauren have been working together with Diane and with me. And so we are going to work with the CTE board. So they, they just did a preliminary survey. They haven't opened it up yet. If they do, we will apply to have that program.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cummings. The next we're on to page 25. And you're going to see a change in one of our courses, one of our CTE courses, going from a half-year course to a full-year course. So that's a change in the duration of the course as well as a change in the credit students earn in that course. And then a couple more pages, page 28. There are different credits assigned to our computer programming, again, in our CTE program. If you'll notice, kids can get up to 16 college credits at URI through the fundamentals, IT fundamentals program. So that is a, it's a change from URI. And it takes, so there are two pathways in our computer science program you can get. You can go through a Cisco program or you can go to the URI. It used to be A++ and it's changed to IT fundamentals and kids can earn up to 16 credits going through that, that program at Narragansett High School, which is huge in our opinion. So from page 28, we're going to go to page 36. And there are changes to the course descriptions, but the reason I wanted to highlight that is if you notice the CTE internship at local UA 51, now we're having kids up there all the time. Kids are going to be doing internships up at local 51. They're going to be getting their certifications in plumbing when they graduate and spend another year at UA in the apprenticeship program. They're, they have the opportunity to earn an associate's in construction management. So really what we're seeing is the culmination of the last four years, getting our kids through those initial courses and into the internship and getting them out of the classroom and up to local 51, which is huge for a school like Narragansett High School. You should all be very proud of yourselves for us getting into this years ago and it's, we're starting, we're finally starting to see the results of that and the rewards.
It's the only program of its kind in the state.
Yes. Very proud of that. Okay. Thank you. And so page 41 starts really the meat and potatoes of the program of studies. It lists the courses that we're going to be offering and descriptions of each course. So the first thing you're going to see is our new AP art course and the description And then we're going to jump to page 58. And that was kind of the reason for my disclaimer earlier. We're offering a new combined geometry, algebra II course. And as Gail had mentioned earlier, looking for different ways to get more kids into higher level math. We believe this is one opportunity that kids can undertake, that they can take a course that's going to give them the major concepts in geometry and the major concepts in algebra II. And so they would take that in their sophomore year and be able to go right into pre-calculus or calculus in their senior. So this will help more kids get into that higher level math area. So this is one of the courses that Gail and the coaches and the math department had come up with. Then we're going to go to page 64. And again, that just lists the internship and the advanced mechanical trades under our CTE program. Page 84 next is just the course description of our new AP course in social studies, human It's a full credit course. And what's wonderful about this is it's an elective and students in grades nine through 12 can take this AP course. I know Dr. Cummings is, is always pushing us to get more kids into AP courses and this provides a great avenue for a multitude of kids to get into an AP course.
And again, just as a reminder, the reason that we want kids to participate in at least one AP course during their high school career is that every bit of research that we've seen is that if students take one AP course, even if they don't pass the exam, if they simply take the course, they're far more likely to persist through college and get a degree because they have taken that course. And so that's why we really want students to have that experience of a rigorous course in high school so that they persist through college or other post-secondary plans and finish those.
And last, but certainly not least, on page 89, the designation of our Spanish V language and culture is now an AP course. And so kids can take Spanish I in the middle school, they can go into Spanish II in the, in their freshman year and end up in Spanish V, which is wonderful, along with the seal of biliteracy that was new over the last year. Part of the commission is sealed that go, that can go on student diplomas. This also is something that you don't find in many high schools, a Spanish V. So we're proud of that as well. And this also gives us an opportunity to bring additional kids into Narragansett High School. So that's our program of studies. Seems like just yesterday we were talking about last year's program of studies. But again, it's a work in progress. We'll take your suggestions and your, and your edits and we'll incorporate it into this document and get, get it ready for kids to sign up for their courses for next year.
Right. And just as a reminder, it was really important for us to get this out to you on December so we can have a reasonable scheduling timeline. Part of the reason that some of the course of studies is still a little bit in draft form is that there's been a lot of, well, there's, there has been proposed changes to secondary regulations at the state level. And it is still unclear about what direction that is moving. And so whether that will be for the current eighth graders or not, or for the current seventh graders, the way they are written, they're for the current eighth graders, which is a very tight timeline for schools to change the graduation requirements for the current eighth graders. And so while at the state level, we are giving some feedback to ride around the, the timeline and the process, they, they are really looking to better align the graduation requirements at the state level with the entrance requirements of URI, RIC and CCI. And so if they continue to move forward, we'll do an information session for the school committee about those and the impact on Narragansett. I think it's premature to do that right now just because they haven't been fully formed at the state level or, or rolled out yet. But just know we're trying to structure things so that we can be responsive to those requirements should they pass.
All right. So what questions do school committee members have about the program of studies? Alex?
I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that's gone into the creation of the program of studies. Really, really impressed and very excited to see all the advanced placement tests that are on here. I know when I was in school, I was really eager and looking to take a few more AP classes. So it's really excited to see them on here and echo how important it is and, and the goal to try to get every student to take at least one AP course. I know from experience how extremely helpful it was and it's really a great way to prepare students for that rigor that comes in a college classroom. And I was just wondering, two quick questions. Are there any prerequisites that come? I know we're trying to encourage students of, of all grade levels to, to take an AP course, but just curious if there are any prerequisites for some of these classes?
So for all of our upper level classes, we never say no. And so we've had students that, you know, have not been on track to try to take an AP class or an honors class, science, math, whatever it is, we'll sit down with the student, talk with them, talk with their parents. And if they feel like they're ready and they want to try it, then we'll give them the opportunity to try it. What I would say is there are kind of differing AP classes that are more appropriate sometimes for students for a first go. So we're not going to throw a student in their kind of first honors class into AP Calc, right? That's like a horrendously challenging class. But we do know that for a lot of students, if they want to take a upper level math, you know, and they might be ready for AP stats, again, a hard class, but sometimes more accessible for a student that might not want to be an engineer or have a deep love of mathematics, right? AP human geography is one where we really think that's going to appeal to a broad amount of, of students. We get a lot of kids into AP Psych. We get a lot of kids into some of the other classes and we're continuing to look at where our student interests. So, you know, we're having some talk about AP environmental science. We have a lot of students who are really interested in that, right? And can we move that forward? So, great question, Alex. I think that there are some kind of entry level almost AP classes where it's accessible and we have a lot of sophomores taking AP Gov right now where, you know, they're getting a taste of that. And we have a lot of students that may have struggled early on going into an AP Psych or we're hoping AP human geography so that they're getting that taste of college before they graduate.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the fact. And I know a lot of people appreciate just how accessible these AP courses are, that they aren't just something that everyone should fear, but should embrace this opportunity to be able to take these courses. And I think it's exceptionally important for everyone to know and especially when moving forward to go on to college, that it's not something to fear, but to embrace. And then just one other question. I was just curious about the AP art exam. I was reading through the description, I'm just, for the lack of clarity, I'm just not familiar with the test. It says that there is a portfolio that is created throughout the duration of the class. And I was just curious what that would look like in place of the typical AP test.
So they're looking for a professional portfolio to be, to be put together by the students. So it may mean some canvas work or some, some ceramic work. Differing media with regard, with regard to the art class.
Right. I could probably help you a little bit with this one, Dan? So I think the, so what happens is that they put together a portfolio and I know Tammy with, with her children knows, knows the program probably even better than I do. But they put together this portfolio of different medias. Dan is saying they are then submitted to the college board. They're then judged and evaluated according to rubrics and scored based on those rubrics. I have that right, Tammy?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all, it's all image. So whatever their artwork is, it's photographed in image. It's all an electronic digital portfolio, which is what they would use to apply for art schools, like for college.
That's wonderful.
And if I can just add that teachers have to be trained to take the AP courses. So they're signed up for the training, they have their portfolio books ready to go. We're looking at a text for the human geography book right now, doing some piloting. So, you know, we're, we're definitely on track to have it, have it ready for the fall.
So the teachers who are teaching, who will be teaching these courses have already taken the, the training?
They're either taking it now or they will be taking it during the summer, but they're registered for it. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Before they start teaching the course.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from any school committee members about the program of studies?
No question, just a comment. For such a small district, we have an incredibly robust program of studies and I think that's pretty awesome and commendable. And you, you mentioned that we should be proud of us. It took someone else with a vision to do this work, so I just wanted to thank you for that vision and the leadership to create something so robust for the students of our community and outside our community who are eager to get in. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Very proud of our program of studies.
And I'm really excited to see all the additions that you highlighted tonight. And I appreciate your presentation. I like how things were, the changes and additions were in yellow and highlighted for us and very succinct, taking us through those changes. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, Justin?
Oh, just one quick comment, piggybacking on what Josh said. Like we are a small district and like to have this much variety available for our students, I think it's just wonderful. And you can clearly see it reading through here that we have computer programs, we have CTE, we have art, we have history. It's really, really shows a wide spectrum and it's very good. And that's it. So back to...
Diane?
I just have a question on page 18 with the agricultural science program. It, it notes in italics at the bottom of the page that the animal science program or course rather is articulated with a URI course for college credit. And I was wondering if next door to that, the plant science course, is there any articulation opportunities at URI or any other college for that course?
So they, we engage in, with URI every year. So every year we have to submit paperwork to URI in order for them to allow us to award that, that college credit. Greg Breen has done it for a number of years. Right now, Aaron Gathen is trying to get certified in order to be able to offer that type of animal science credit that we have had in the past. Does that answer your question?
I was just wondering if any similar effort might be ongoing for plant science?
Yeah. If, if we can get...
Along with the animal?
If we can get floriculture approved and get college credit through the master gardener program of URI, we're certainly open to that. But every year we meet with them and go over what courses we can offer for URI credit.
And then just... And then just one quick suggestion. For all the CTE programs in their chart, they, they show where, what it leads to in terms of workplace certifications. And I would, um, the agricultural science program has that information. If you read through the whole, all the course descriptions and everything, you can, you can cull that out. But I was just going to suggest maybe they add a row under each of the different pathways for what the accreditation or workplace certification is as a result of a student successfully completing the pathway.
Sure. That's a great suggestion.
Any other questions from the school committee? So this is a voting item tonight. So there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor to approve the program of studies?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Warner.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
You too. And our last item tonight is not a voting item, it's a discussion. So in our packet, you do have some information about the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Awareness Committee, which is an advisory board to the town council. We heard a, a little soundbite about that during open forum. So this advisory committee to the town council is comprised of six members and it looks like there is one open spot. And so if we want to have some discussion about if there is a school committee member that would be interested in being a liaison to this committee. If there's more than one school committee member, I'm sure this is a public subcommittee that meets. And so even if you couldn't participate as a voting member, I'm sure you could attend the meetings. Pete, is there any other information besides like what's in our packet that you have?
No, just what we heard in open comment. And so certainly, I think the, um, from the school perspective, we would certainly welcome coordination and communication with the town efforts on, on this area.
So I'm going to open it up to the school committee. Certainly if there is anyone that is interested in being part of this six-person committee. Anyone wants to speak up now? If people want to think about it, I'm sure you could think about it and reach out to the contact information if you have any questions. But is there anybody who's interested?
Well, I mean, I'm certainly interested and I don't know if Josh would as well. I know we're both sitting members of the school's diversity committee and we currently work with a similar committee on the school level. So I think either between the two of us or one of us, or, you know, it doesn't even matter if it's just one of us volunteering to sit in this position. But I think the liaison coming from, you know, our perspective or, you know, whoever it is, doesn't necessarily have to be from us. But we'd certainly be able to work with and share that perspective with whoever is the liaison if it's not one of us.
I think it would make sense if it was one of the two people who is on our school-based committee. So what I would say is if you're both interested, then perhaps you can kind of talk offline to see who actually wants to be the liaison. The other one could certainly come. Josh, I don't know if you want to weigh in or not at this time. If you want to think about it, you want to talk to Alex. Or if you know, like, yes, you're interested, then the two of you talk. If you're kind of looking at how you're balancing your time and are concerned about that and are happy to have Alex. So I'll turn it over to you if you want to share your thoughts. Ms. Spah, you can say, I'll think about it and I'll talk to Alex. That's fine too.
I do need to think about that.
Sure.
And Alex and I will touch base and we'll have something for you next time.
Sure. That sounds good. So if the two of you talk, because it looks like they've got pretty clear parameters of six people, one town council member, five residents. So there's only one person that can be an official, you know, if they take any votes in that advisory capacity. But certainly, it's got to be a public subcommittee that is open for anyone who wants to go to any of the meetings. So if the two of you, um, talk it over and one of you wants to kind of be the formal liaison, I would say go ahead after the two of you confer and then email that contact person directly. Like you don't have to wait to the January meeting to say, we've decided it's going to be XYZ. Then you can go ahead. That way, if they have a January meeting scheduled, you guys can proceed from there. And then certainly just, you know, email Peter and I what you decide, just so we're, we're in the loop. Diane and Justin, are you comfortable if the liaison is either Josh or Alex because they're on our school-based?
That makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
All right. All right. So we'll, we'll wait to hear back from that. So thank you. All right. Any communications that anybody wants to mention before we adjourn? Okay. So we do have a meeting coming up this Monday. So we have a joint workshop with the town council at 6:30. And then you also should have seen in your email, um, a kind of a save the date and time for a six o'clock special school committee meeting. Are we confirmed, hoping to confirm that for this Monday at six o'clock?
Yes. So we will be confirmed and, and posting that. And that was for a budget item that wasn't ready for tonight.
Okay. So six o'clock would be a special school committee meeting, just what Pete just said. So we can take a vote on a budget item. And then 6:30 is going to be in the large boardroom is where we usually meet with the town council for our annual budget workshop.
Correct. And that's a very high level discussion about just conditions and state aid and that type of piece.
And six o'clock for our very short special meeting on the budget item, we'll meet upstairs?
Correct.
Do we have kind of consensus that that works at least for three of us? Okay, good. We're all set for that then, Lauren. So advertise that six o'clock special meeting for upstairs. We'll join the town council at 6:30 in the boardroom and that's on Monday. And then we'll be back here next year, January 19th for our regular business meeting at seven o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:30? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody, and happy holidays and happy new year. I'll see you all Monday, but...